Good evening. I'll now call the City of Cannon Falls City Council Meeting for Tuesday, August the 7th, to order. Roll call.
Councilmember Duncan?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Holes?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Mattson?
Here.
McCusker?
Yes.
And Mayor Robinson?
Yep. All please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the meeting. At this time, the Chair takes a motion to approve the agenda I submitted.
So.
I'll second. Have a motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? He carries. Brings us to item five this evening, which is public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone wishing to address the council this evening? Seeing as there's no one that wishes to address the council, we'll move on to item six, which is a presentation on the CapEx 2020 project.
Can you press the button at the base of the mic?
Okay, there we go. Maybe? I had it up earlier.
There's a hammer in a drawer there.
Actually, I ended up pushing a button up here.
Good evening. My name's Grant Stevenson. I work at Excel Energy. I'm the project manager for the CapEx 2020 345 KV Transmission Project from Hampton to Rochester-Lacrosse that you've no doubt heard about over the past few years. With me is my colleague Sarah Schwartz. She leads right-of-way in land acquisition for our project. I just have seven brief slides. The reason I'm in, we sent a letter to Mr. Reeves offering to come in and give you an update now that the Public Utilities Commission has selected a route to let you know what that route is, what some of the issues are going on, and a little bit about the schedule ahead of us because no doubt you're going to have constituents that are going to ask some of these questions, I assume. So, just a brief overview, our project is a 345 KV line from Hampton, 215th Street and Highway 52 up north of Hampton down to a substation in the Rochester area and then goes across the Mississippi River to La Crosse. And it's intended to serve customers of Excel Energy, People's Co-op, and Rochester Public Utilities, and some of the other cooperatives in the area, including Goodhue Electric. The project was approved by state commissions in both Minnesota and Wisconsin in May. In Minnesota, there's two permits. One is need. That was debated and settled in 2009, and then they had to decide what route to pick. And the route was selected in May by a written decision by the Public Utilities Commission. There are five owners: Darrellin Power Cooperative, WPPI Energy, Southern Minnesota Municipal Power, Rochester Public Utilities, and Excel Energy. The five, the other four partners asked Excel Energy to lead the project. Here's a rough route map. Up in the top-left corner, the square denotes a new substation up north of Hampton that I mentioned. Then the route that was approved by the Public Utilities Commission largely follows Highway 52. There's a couple notable exceptions in Cannon Falls area, and I'll show you some zooming in maps in a little bit. Then a substation north of Pine Island, and then the red continues easterly and crosses the Mississippi River near Elma, Wisconsin, and Kellogg, Minnesota. And then it continues on the orange line down to Holman, which is one of the northern suburbs of La Crosse. And then in the Rochester area, there are two lower voltage lines that are shown in the blue. So now I'm showing you the US 52 and Highway 19 interchange, and I labeled a few of the businesses in the area: Sansfrooms Repair, St. Paul's Church and School, and the Funeral Home, just to give you some reference. The blue line, I hope you can see it on the west side, is what the Public Utilities Commission selected for the route after their deliberations. We had an original route that went right along Highway 52. We had a route that went west through Randolph and down Stanton, and then largely in the Highway 56 corridor. They ended up selecting this particular route and that particular blue alignment as they were trying to balance public input, environmental impacts, and one of the key factors here is the DOT's request to stay approximately 25 feet off the highway right-of-way. And as you know, the street there, leading up to the houses and the church and Sansfrooms, there's not much room between that frontage road and the highway itself. So the route that ended up being selected went around to the west of this neighborhood. And then now we're down closer into the proposed Conner Road 24 interchange. Should be the same map that's on the wall behind me, and again, I've labeled some of the items. The route here follows Highway 52 and then cuts behind, again, it's a blue line, I apologize, it's kind of hard to see, cuts behind the Saratoga Inn Hotel through, between the Saratoga Inn Hotel and the DOT truck facility in the wooded parcel. And then intends to follow the baggage road that will come along with the new highway interchange. And so we need to coordinate with the DOT as they finalize their design, and then that will be input to our final placement of the transmission line. And then it follows that baggage road roughly and then joins Highway 52 again, south of the Fillmore facility. A few dates that are upcoming, the folks in the Highway 19 area, including the St. Paul's and some of the neighbors, are asking the Public Utilities Commission to reconsider their request, and PUC will be taking that up this Thursday. And then the Hampton-to-Pine Island segment is the last segment of our project we're going to build. We're starting north of Rochester, build a line into Rochester, and then over to La Crosse, and then we'll come back. So it would not be abnormal for landowners in the area that are affected by having poles on their property to not hear from one of our land agents until possibly late 2013 because it's the last of the five segments to be built. And construction is right now slated for late 2014 to late 2015. So those, another advantage, those dates, my understanding, the interchange should be done by them. Is that, is that right? So that will allow us to incorporate that interchange and baggage road system design into where we locate poles. And the last slide I have is where you can find some information. CapEx2020.com/Lacrosse has links to maps and all kinds of documents that were going on through the state review and approval process, and then there's Sarah's information and mine as well. That's the end of my slides. Any questions about the project or any of the decisions?
I just don't understand why we're running power lines when we can build small substations and then just run shorter lines instead of messing up the whole infrastructure of everywhere.
Yeah, it certainly has impacts in this area for sure because of everything you have along Highway 52. What this project does is the high-voltage ring that was built around the Twin Cities in the 50s and 60s into about 1970 is being extended down to southern Minnesota and western Wisconsin. So there are some substations being built with part of this project, but what we needed is another power line. You think of it like another water main.
Don't we get enough energy from the nuclear power plant to be able to do all of this and run it down that way?
The, but you need to get it here. What's lacking in this area from Cannon Falls down to Rochester and then over to Wisconsin is another pipeline to carry that power. The nuclear power plant runs power into the big grid, but what's lacking in this area, according to our engineers, and the two states reviewed it and made sure that we were correct, was another power line. So that's the reason for the proposal.
And how much money are you guys going to pay people at Cannon Falls to run power lines through our area?
People who will have the power line on their property will be, we need to purchase an easement to build it. So the people that end up hosting the power line on their project are compensated for that easement.
I disagree.
This line was built on basis of need, you said, right?
Yes, sir.
Need. There's two kinds of need, of course. There's current need and there's perception of future need. What part of this line was future need?
There, the Rochester greater area, the city and People's Cooperative, that part of southern Minnesota, is already running at a deficit. Rochester's desire was to have another power line built down there five or 10 years ago. So it's, because people have asked us, what's the electric growth projections? And in Rochester and in Winona and in the La Crosse area, those areas already at a deficit, so they're behind. And then the rest of the region, it's a, it's a projection of future.
Will this, will this reflect rates, lower rates for people or higher rates?
The power line will be on all our bills. Sarah's bill in Eau Claire, she lives in Eau Claire, my bill in Woodbury, people, Excel Energy customers in Sioux Falls, we all pay for the infrastructure that's built everywhere.
So it'll be an increase?
There will be an increase. But there's also, we found, anticipated market benefits, access to less expensive generation, some $58 million that offsets some of those costs. So the cost for the infrastructure will go up a little bit. The high voltage transmission's only 7% of a bill at Excel Energy. How much that generation's, access to cheaper generation will offset that is not been determined.
Well, did you take in consideration possibly in the future alternative energy sources that'll be available in, in who knows how many years, maybe a decade from now or so?
Yep. The state, both states considered all of those, building only generators, alternative power generators, energy efficiency, and determined that the line was still needed. Things that are yet, this next statement is not from the Public Utilities Commission, but it's my view on things. Inventions that are yet to come may forestall the need for a future power line, but the way the electric grid needs to operate, and there are national reliability mandates that require utilities to plan their electric system in a certain way, needs to take in account current technologies. And this power line was what the commissions in both states decided to build.
But if you need that much energy in Rochester, why are they going to close the Silver Lake Plant that they've got down there? Why not replace the Silver Lake Plant? And then you've got all the electricity you need in Rochester. We don't need it here. They need it down there.
This is a common question we get, and it's very difficult to explain. Power lines and power plants are not synonymous. This line is not built to provide power from a new power plant. I have had a lot of questions about that in the last five years. You're building a new power line, there must be a new power plant somewhere, and that's not the case.
Isn't this being fed out of North Cora or South Cora?
No, the entire electric grid is, this is the analogy I think of. You're a small town, I grew up in a small town, you have one water tower, and you've got multiple well pumps, and you have multiple water mains going out to the residents. Sometimes you might have enough wells, but a new subdivision comes in, and you need to run a water main to that subdivision. The water mains are like the transmission lines. The well pumps are the power plants. We are currently in a situation where the electric system has enough well pumps. We just need another water main to get the power, in this case, the electricity to customers. And that's the difference.
Seems, sounds like some people didn't put enough thought into it to put the generating plants where they're closer to where they needed to be instead of running all these silly lines all over the place.
Well, that's, as I said, power plants, building new power plants were considered as one of the options by the commissions in both states, and they elected that the power line was the proposal that they thought was.
I'd like to meet some of those people myself.
They had more lobbyists than, obviously.
Well, the thing, the thing that I've found that didn't make a whole lot of sense to me was you bring these lines down close to 52 where it affects a few thousand people, whereas one of the routes, you know, along 56 in that area, you only affect a couple hundred people. That seemed pretty stupid. Why affect 4,000 people instead of just 200 or 300 people?
That kind of testimony was given to the Public Utilities Commission. We study, we proposed a route and an alternative route, and then the Public Utilities Commission does their own study and their own analysis. And their determination was Highway 52 because they tried to run new infrastructure near existing infrastructure, and it was 15 miles shorter. But I understand your point. There are other parts of the project where we are, some of the routes that were picked between Roach, Pine Island and Plainview were a half mile off of a road in the middle of a section along a field division. So.
Thank you. There's another aspect of the problem, too, that I'm sure was addressed at some meetings, and that was the health issues of people who live near the power lines, right? Did you bring that up at?
Oh, there's all kinds of analysis that was done, including electromagnetic fields.
Right.
And the place that I would suggest people look is go to CapEx2020.com/Lacrosse and go to the Wisconsin page. Wisconsin has a 27-page discussion, and it doesn't take, it reads pretty well, on all the studies that were done and their analysis, that their, their conclusion, there are no adverse health impacts.
Who funded those studies?
Because they wanted that thing to go through.
It was, the state of Wisconsin did a literature search on all the studies that are available in North America and in the world. There are European studies in there as well.
I've read some document, documentation on these studies, and I think the results were a bit more mixed than, than you might, than you might think. There were definitely some that showed adverse effects from the, how near you got to power lines, and how often you were, and how often the, how strong the transmissions were.
That's why I suggest anybody who's really interested, read this 27 pages because I learned a lot from there. There are two kinds of studies. There are statistical studies, which suggest there might be an association between a health effect and something. And then if it shows an association, and that's what you've read, then they go to the, to clinical studies. And it's the clinical studies that have not demonstrated that link.
And those doctors are driving Mercedes.
Well, you know, they say statistics, statistics and lies, but no, my point is, I've read stories about things that, that seem to suggest that there are people who are affected, no matter how many, how many, how severe it is or something. It is an effect on people, and it does have an effect on people.
And I can assure you that.
And it's a long-term effect, perhaps. Perhaps it doesn't show itself for some time.
I can assure you that this was an issue that was vetted in both state proceedings.
Okay.
No, I got a letter three weeks ago or so, and in that letter it talked about reimbursements from impact. So I brought it up to air, and if he had gotten the letter, and of course, he hadn't gotten it, I think the reason I got it is because I wrote up to the people up there protesting this when it was going on. And, but then I was really kind of shocked because it talked about some people getting paid for what land and talk and different things, and then some cities or people will get paid by impact, but they can only use it for parks or something.
That's in Wisconsin.
So why is it that in our situation, we're taking it right through our town and we're getting nothing out of this?
Wisconsin, that's an issue for us to talk to our legislators about. In Wisconsin, the Wisconsin Legislature passed something called the Environmental Impact Fee, and it has a prescribed payment for local governments, cities, townships, counties. Minnesota doesn't have that.
Why wouldn't you guys be gentlemen to just honor that right through this whole system? If it's good for one state, why isn't it good for another?
Well, it goes on our electric bill.
Yeah?
Just.
Well, Wisconsin is going on there, too.
So whatever goes in our electric bill is governed by the Public Utilities Commission.
Right.
So it has to pass their muster. So if that is something, and I think there are a lot of local governments would be interested, should talk to the legislators about that. We are, we're not AT&amp;T, we're not a private company. We are a public service corporation. We are regulated, we are heavily regulated. We're regulated more than a lot of municipal governments are regulated. And we don't build much of anything on the high voltage transmission side of the world or a power plant without explicit government approval about what route and what it should cost. So we don't have the latitude to make those kind of payments without public utilities.
But this, this does affect Cannon Falls. I mean, our overpass is going in out there, our development is going in out there. It is going to affect through our planning and everything else, how we're going to work around the power lines, what we're going to do. So there is an effect by this thing.
Yep.
And, and if you'd have had to go out Highway 56 and you wouldn't have been able to put it on right-of-way, it would have been a lot more expensive. So I feel a little bit cheated that this is probably the cheaper route, and it does follow the Minnesota rules, but it also does affect our southern end of our town. So I realize it's been all approved, but we're accepting this. I think Hampton and Pass are the two towns that are taking the plunt to this. I think it's a road, it goes around it. Pine Island, it just goes straight through one spot.
On the west side of town, yes, sir.
So we're taking it in our whole town, and I, the letter I wrote to them, I told them I, I can't feel good about it. It's, it's what has to be. I also, with our fracking sand that goes, going on now, and they're talking about enough natural gas for probably 500 years now, and we just did an upper, update on all our power lines out here for our support plant out here. It seems crazy to me that we couldn't have updated another power plant out here and took care of Cannon Falls and let the rest of the grid go by itself. To me, there's other ways to do this, but this is what's been approved. But I don't, I don't feel good about it as far as representing the city. I don't feel good about that power line going there. But I realize it's all been proved, you did your homework and stuff, but I wish it had gone another direction.
Yeah, well, again, that wasn't my decision. We are governed by the, the rules and laws of the state of Minnesota, and they suggest that we have to have a project that has a need, and they determine need. There were three weeks of hearings in front of a judge in 2008, and then deliberations by the Public Utilities Commission. So there is an extensive record, and all the things that you're mentioning were considered. And then on the route side, we have to propose at least two routes, and we're guided by state law and regulation that suggests we should look first to existing transmission lines and roadways. And we established two routes. And then the Public Utilities Mission, Commission took a lot of public testimony. There was another week of hearings, public and in St. Paul, and it's the Public Utilities Commission that made that decision. We certainly understand their impacts, for sure. We know that. We know that there is, a project like this does not have impacts.
They don't get, they don't give us alternatives, though. They don't say, if we put it down 52, your electric grid will be $50 a month. If we put it down 56, it'll be $65 a month. They don't give us alternatives, and I know they're considering the price of things. But me personally, I would rather have $10 a month and had it out at 56, whether some of the farmers had to be reimbursed or, or not. You're taking it through our hospital zone out there, you're taking it through our new development zone. So I gotta quit talking because I don't think it's doing any good, but that's how I feel.
I, I want to assure you all, we understand that there are impacts. We certainly do. And we provided information to the decision-makers so they could try to make a decision that they thought best balanced things, and not everybody's happy, and we certainly understand that.
We're going to get ahold of Scott Walker tomorrow, though, and see if we get a copy.
I can send you a copy of that statute, if you'd like, actually. Would you like that?
I'd like that.
Help me remember that, Sarah?
I think if you carry anything away from this meeting, it's the idea that if the decision had been made from this council's point of view, you wouldn't have got the, you understand that.
Well, they've been reimbursed anyway.
Well, I mean, I don't think you'd have got, you wouldn't have got that route. I mean, there's just, you must have run into a lot of opposition during your, during the hearings. You've heard most of the arguments, I'm sure.
Every, every one of them, more than I can count.
Yeah, and news.
And we got to pay more, and we're not even getting any electricity. It's running right past us.
Well, appreciate the information you gave us tonight.
So, yeah, the key things that I wanted to leave you all with is our contact information because something will, is going to be built and a route was determined. Although the Highway 19 westerly bypassed that interchange, the landowners have asked PUC to reconsider, and they'll take that up on Thursday. But people, and I think a lot of the line ended up being routed in the township. We'll offer to speak to them as well. But if, if people ask you, where are these power line people? I haven't heard anything. Many, many times, I refer to this as the great silent period, and people get concerned when you're on the last phase of a long project and they haven't heard anything. That's troubling to people. So that's the main reason why I wanted to come here, so that you had contact information. You can direct them to either Sarah or.
You probably would have got a lot more people interested if you had told them that you were going to be raising their electric bill by whatever cost it is by putting these things in here. I mean, because nobody wants their electric bill raised for something they don't use.
We, we did that, too. A couple bucks a month.
First, I've heard about it.
Okay. Well, there's a lot of information, and it's, it's difficult to get out, and we've, we've tried hard, but.
Prairie Island Plant, where does that energy go?
It, I think of the metro area as this big water tower. It just fills.
I know, but I mean, that one goes not, that one goes out of state, right?
No, it's, it serves Excel Energy customers, and it's like, it's an Excel Energy power plant.
When those lines were built, they were going into, they weren't in Minnesota, they were going out of here.
Two or three lines head to the Twin Cities, and the fourth, I think there's three of them. The fourth one heads to St. Louis, that area.
Yeah.
And that, that's part of, that interconnection between states was happening anyway in the late 60s after some blackouts the country experienced. So we have interconnections now to Manitoba and North Dakota and Wisconsin, Kansas City and St. Louis for the purposes of backing each other up in case of, you know, catastrophic storm, those sorts of things. I remember a tornado, I grew up near Mankato in 1982, took out 30 miles of transmission line. That was the line that ends up heading down to Kansas City, but luckily we had other connections so that we can swap power amongst the utilities in case of those catastrophic events because society has decided that the power always needs to be on, and that's why we have these federal mandates.
We've got candles.
The one thing is, I will compliment you guys on, for whatever it's worth, is that ever since Enron has been out of business, we don't seem to have any brownout or blackout problems anymore. And if you guys ever had a high demand, you should have had a high demand this year.
My air conditioner ran a lot.
So if Fred was tested to his max, it should have been tested this year. And it was nice not to have any blackout or brownouts.
Yeah, I agree. Okay.
That makes you wonder a little bit that we need bigger power lines. We'd have worked fine under this demand.
The, this transmission system is designed belt and suspenders for the reason that it's, you know, a central service and life-protecting essential service in some, some ways. That's why if we're doing our job, we're looking out far enough into the future and projecting when we need a new belt. So, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll give Grant a minute to get his stuff moved, and then we'll move on to the public hearing. Okay, this time we're going to move on to item seven, which is Resolution 1974, certifying unpaid utility charges to be collected with taxes, and we will be doing a public hearing on that after we talk about it. Lanell?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing.
This is a public hearing for the certification of unpaid utility bills to the property owner's taxes. We will be certifying this to the county if they remain unpaid. So, this would be an opportunity for them to speak on that.
I saw that you put together a nice piece on that. What's your thoughts, I guess? Because I know one of them is very large.
What will happen is, is this one, we'll give, yeah, we will give them the option to use our payment plan structure. If they choose not to, you know, that's when, you know, we can look here. But we already had this one in place, you know, the bill's outstanding, so we figured we'd still run it through for certification for that one. But we'd like to place that one, you know, with a payment plan and get that one taken care of. Because that would be a commercial industrial one, right, Lanell, the large one? Yeah.
That one's been going on for quite a while, right?
Correct. Yep. So, you know, we have the option to certify at any point, you know, if we approve it. But what we're going to do in this situation is move to the payment plan for them and work it through that way on the payment plan system and see how that goes. It'll be our first test, really. So, we'll find out if it works or not.
Looked good to me.
I think it's the thing, Aaron, where we talked at Public Works to try to make something different. And I remember at one time on here, when I totaled up, it was like $34,000, and now I think we're around 22,000. It would be nice if we come back a year from now and see that cut in half again. So, that's what we're hoping for, and hopefully, that's what helps.
Yep. Okay, this time, we'll open the public hearing for the delinquent water and sewer bills. If there's anyone that wishes to address the council during the hearing. Seeing as there's no one that wishes to address the council, at this time, we will close the public hearing. And the chair will call for a motion to adopt Resolution 1974, certifying unpaid utility charges to be collected with taxes.
No more. No second?
A motion by Merle, second by Bill. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. That brings us to Item 8, the consent agenda. Items on this area of the agenda may be adopted for, or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. Item A is adjusting correct claims for accounting period ending August 3, 2012. Item B, the meeting minutes for the July 17, 2012 city council meeting. Item C, second reading and adoption of ordinance 321, amending ordinance 315, and interim ordinance temporarily prohibiting certain development in the South Trunk Highway 52 corridor. Item D, hire EMS applicants for the ambulance service. And Item E, commercial industrial utility disconnect policy. Are there any items anyone wishes to bring down?
I just got a question, so I suppose we got to bring it down on C?
On C?
C.
Okay, we'll make that item 9B. Anything else? Not, the chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda, removing Item C, second reading and adoption of ordinance 321, which will be in Item 9B in council business.
No more. No second?
Motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Approved. And that'll bring us to Item 9, council business, the Item A liquor liability limits.
I've included some information in the packet. We had one of our local agents stop in, and their concern was that when our local organizations want to have special events and purchase insurance, they often request that they can buy more. But under state statute, the insurance underwriters can't sell more unless the city requires it. So, the concern is, is that right now, it's felt that the amount set by statute potentially could, may not be enough if there is an incident at an event, which could really have a catastrophic effect on, you know, a nonprofit organization or somebody kind of holding one of these special events. I've talked to other cities in our area, and the majority stick with the state statute just because it's the state statute, and that's what they go with. The city of Kenyon does require a higher amount. I think theirs was the, I think it was $1 million, $1,300,000 is where they were at. So, they required a pretty high, pretty high amount. But the argument being that right now, they pay $125 a day for the statutory minimum amount, where if you jump it up to basically the highest amount, you know, they're going to pay $80 more for the day. And the thought being that the $80 probably isn't going to hurt them as much as that if something would occur, not having enough coverage obviously would have a much bigger impact. So, it's not something the council has to do, but it is something that, you know, we may want to consider. Now, you know, we haven't heard from any of the, you know, local nonprofits or organizations saying that they think it should be higher necessarily, but at the same time, it's easy just to say, well, this is what's required, we do it. But then, if something does happen, I think the concern is, is we could have some big negative impact.
That's my question. How many people have come forward from these nonprofits saying, okay, you know, and how many of them ask for more? I mean, we don't know how many of people...
Right, we've only had one local agent come in and say that he's heard and he thinks it's too low. But we haven't been getting, you know, a lot of contact from anybody asking for the higher limits. But, you know, again, they don't always come to us with questions.
Does this, does this affect like when the firemen have their dance?
Yep.
And so, that's a city.
Well, when the firemen have their dance, it's technically the relief association doing it. Not the city, but...
I know, but if there's, but if there's trouble, they're going to come after us.
Yeah, right. But we would be covered under, well, let's see, the relief association would be hit first, but then we would be covered underneath our insurance for property, things like that that happens on. But technically, it's the relief association that is the one that's holding the insurance and things.
So, we would have enough insurance if the relief association did not?
We would have enough for us. The relief association would have to have theirs get covered, and then after that, it would be well. Does ours cover the difference, or do we have to some other way try to make that up? So, it's, we would be okay, I think, just because we have that, we have our insurance in our things. Now, the relief association, they'll still, like I said, technically, they may be separate, but they're going to take a hit, and at some point, we'll probably have to deal with that, too. So, yeah.
Still, $80 really isn't that much.
Well, when you're, when you're some of these smaller nonprofits that are trying to make a profit off of these things, $80 is a lot of money to some of those folks.
Well, it shouldn't, before you, before we do anything or decide, shouldn't we have a sort of a consensus by local businesses? I mean, other voices have to...
Right, and that's what, I didn't want to get too much into contacting anyone until I brought to the council first, is to see if it's some, like I said, a lot of cities just say, you know what, it's state statute, we're sticking with state statute. We're not going to mess with trying to decide what's the proper limit and what's not the proper limit. We feel if the state feels it's this way, this is the way it should be. If anybody wants to change, they should talk to the legislators about it. That's what most of the other cities have said. So, before I went out and started making this a bigger issue, I wanted to talk to the council first and see what the...
This isn't about the business, it's about the victim. What is fair there? Yeah, none of us want an accident, none of us want to spend the extra money. But at some point, at some time, we took and allowed another hour opening that night this year, and we didn't require anything more for that. And we also have to keep another, two police officers on another hour or two afterwards because of that. So, I don't, I don't know that this is unreasonable. I mean, I compared my rates for what I have for liability, and wow, the bars are getting by a lot cheaper. And I don't think my liability should be as high as a bar. So, I don't know, I don't know how to go on this thing outside of, it's a little bit of a mixed bag. You're in that business, and you don't want to carry maximum liability. And you can't tell me when they have a big wedding party some night, that their liability isn't higher on that particular night. So, I don't want to pass judgment, but I also think it's something that needs to be looked into. I don't know.
That's a different issue because their liability is based on their insurance on their liquor license that they already have. It's not, this is for a separate event for a small nonprofit that does something separately.
I might be interested in knowing what, you know, statewide, what the courts have done when, because I'm sure that someone that's gotten sued has gone, well, you know, the state statute only says we got to carry this much. Does the court...
Well, generally, what will happen is, if you get a word above that, you're responsible for it. The organization's responsible for it. I mean, just as an example, the city of Pine Island, when they had their municipal liquor store, they were undercovered, and they were found liable for over-serving, and then an accident happened, and the family sued, things like that. And basically, that's what caused them to get rid of their liquor stores, that after they settled that thing out, they, the city had to make up the difference of what the liquor liability insurance was in that settlement. And after that, they couldn't afford to keep operating it, they sold it. That was the big reason behind it. So, you know, what happens basically is, if you're awarding a judgment, whatever the difference is between what your insurance covers and that judgment, they go after you for it. They go after that organization for it, and...
And if you do have a big, if something sad would have happened, a big lawsuit, and they came after them, and they're underinsured, and we lose them, their business too, that's not, that's not good either.
And that's, and that's what the agent's concern was, is that these, you know, whether it's the VFW, it's the wine festival, you know, the organization committee, you know, whatever it might be for these events, the fair association, you know, those sort of things, that if there was something that happened and claims came back in higher, it could have a really catastrophic effect on those organizations. So, that's what, that's only, that's only what the concern was. And like I said, you know, a lot of this is dependent on the council. Do you want to, if we want to take a look at doing something besides statute, either we can tell the businesses, if you have concerns, go to your legislators, or I can contact them. We can just pull out all of our special events licenses from the past year, and we'll contact each one and ask them, do you think you would, you know, but it's hard to say what they would say. I don't know, you know?
Well, we can do, you know, we can look at it just to see, I mean, exactly what their feelings are. I mean, I mean, once they know that, hey, you know, you could be liable for something if something happens, and it could end up bankrupting you, maybe they'll do it. I mean, there may be more of them that are asking for more that we don't know about.
Right. I can do that.
Yeah, I think, I think, I'm not against this. I think it might be a good idea, but I'd still like to hear from...
Yeah.
Sort of like people carrying an extra umbrella policy, personally.
Okay. I'll get ahold of them, they'll bring it back.
Okay. Thanks, Aaron.
Yeah, thank the person for bringing it up, too.
Okay, that will bring us to Item 9B, which is a second reading and adoption of ordinance 321.
Oh, I was just wondering, or Aaron or Dave, I was kind of skeptical about changing that to start with when we did it. And whatever we do out there, isn't it almost a CUP for everything we do out there? So, why did we have to change the ordinance when we got to, when we got to view everything that's going to happen out there through the stages and the planning commission anyway? And we have the right to deny it or accept it.
I think with regards to the B2 zoning district, forgetting about the moratorium for a minute, there are still quite a few uses that are permitted out there, that we don't have to review them by conditional use permit. There are some that we do, but there are also uses that are just permitted, a little bit different than a residential business district zone where everything falls under a conditional use permit. So, one of the reasons for the moratorium was not only to give us, give us an opportunity to some planning out there for future land uses and expansion of existing businesses, but also for us to get kind of a handle on what's going to happen with the secondary roads, which are primarily being built in the township areas, which begs the question, is there going to be annexation? Is there not annexation? Is the township going to take care of the roads? You know, what's going to happen with that? And I think, too, just the moving target of the hospital project and what's happening around that, that particular site. I think all those things together, we felt that the best of our worst options was to look at the moratorium to give us, give us a chance to at least to try to look at these issues and maybe come up with some sense of where we want to head with the future development of that corridor before allowing just private development to continue whatever way they might, might wish to in the next, you know, year or so. So, the moratorium for a Cannon Powersports, the only way that we can allow them to build this year during the moratorium is actually to amend that moratorium ordinance. The reason we had to do it twice for them is the first plan that they brought in was just the warehouse addition, and we found out later that what they really wanted to do was also look at building the showroom addition and possibly a cold storage building yet this year, which forced us and them then to come in and amend that first ordinance. So, usually, we would have just handled all of those projects in one fall swoop in one ordinance, but in this case, we had to do it twice. So, if anybody else during the moratorium period would like to do something like Cannon Powersports, they want to build a building, they want a change of the ordinance requirements, we would have to come back to the council through an ordinance to amend the original moratorium ordinance.
And then, when do we get rid of that? When highways are sat?
The end of, the end of this year.
The clinic is there?
Yeah, no, we will try to wrap the planning stage of this whole program up before year end.
Okay, because I know you've got other ones that are looking out there, too. Okay.
The good news is, there's some development going on.
Yeah, that's the good news.
That's a good thing.
Try not to hold that up.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, the chair will take a motion to approve amending ordinance 315 and interim ordinance temporarily prohibiting certain development in the South Trunk Highway 52 corridor.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Bill, second by Merle. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Approve. That moves us to Item 10, which is reports, and we'll start with Mr. Maroney.
Nothing, sir, thank you.
Dustin?
We'll not be having a library board meeting this month.
And Brenda? Rich?
Tonight, we have Night to Unite, which is an event that we have every August, every year. The police department sets it up. It's an opportunity for the citizens to get to know the police officers as well as their neighbors. It encourages the neighbors to communicate with each other, look out for each other within that neighborhood or surrounding neighborhood. And it also makes the officers more approachable and we're able to answer questions that maybe citizens may not have the opportunity or time to ask on a leisure basis. So, that's happening tonight. And it's something that we set up every year, and it's pretty successful. On another note, last Thursday, we had what was labeled as Dunk a Cop on First Thursday event. The department put that together. This office staff volunteered, officers volunteered their time, and it turned out to be a real great success, thanks to the participation of the community. I think I won highest bid for the first dunk, and then Officer Berg had a large line when it came his turn. All in all, though, for the food shelf, the police department was able to raise $800.
Great, great, great job, guys.
So, that was a huge success.
Good job.
We look forward to hopefully doing it again next, next year.
I think we should do it in the winter time.
January would be great.
Make it a polar plunge, maybe.
Thanks. Aaron?
The only thing I have is just a reminder that the filing periods are open for the council and mayor seats. So, if you haven't picked up your filing information yet, we have it here and ready. And that runs through primary election day, so next Tuesday, 5:00.
I was also going to mention that this Thursday, we have scheduled a public accuracy test. It's the testing of our equipment that's going to be held for the primary election, which is next Tuesday. And if anybody's interested in seeing that, it will be here at 10:00.
Merle?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Bill?
Nothing.
Leroy? Bill?
And I have nothing. Just great job by the police department again for raising the funds, and I hope everybody enjoys the national night out, immunity night tonight, and let's all stay safe. And it's time the chair will take our motion to adjourn.
No more. Second.